We're recording.
Okay, calling to order the June 1st meeting of Manchester Essex Regional School District's School Committee for a workshop. As such, our agenda has no public comment or subcommittee reports, and we will launch right into the workshop.
So the hope is today, we can take a look at and answer questions about the three potential scenarios that you'll be deliberating about on Tuesday night, with no other goal than to try to get us to a point where we can work efficiently on Tuesday and not be trying to make a big decision at 11:00 p.m. and feeling like there's still a lot of loose ends and unanswered questions. So, no, really no new materials from us today. I thought the blue we would use as a blueprint, the overview from May 23rd meeting, which has the compromise concept in there. It's, and I would say it's a compromise concept. It's not an end-all-be-all. You know, the constant, the idea of using E and D at 250 could be E and D at 50, it could be E and D at 700. I mean, I think those are the areas for discussion. What it tries to do is try, it's our last-ditch effort to use attrition as a means of cutting the program without cutting returning personnel, but they are still cut. And I think when we look out into future years, any scenario we have, even the override scenario, does not fix the structural problem. So, backing up for a second, we'll use this as a blueprint today. It's got the construct for the total cut package. It's got the concept for the compromise package. This is the 321 budget. Just as a point of reference, Jake had sent some ideas that we can process around for the compromise. And Avi, is this the multi-year? This is the multi-year apportionment?
Yeah, so for people to see how it would have been shaped out, plus budget growth, assessment growth, and enrollment changes, and enrollment between the community.
And I'll just, maybe that's where I'll launch, and then we can just sit back and do Q and A, which is, if you look at the three scenarios, from the first budget we started with to the landing, the 321 budget that reduced costs and included some heads reductions through attrition, whether we went with that budget and got the override, we go with the total cuts budget, or we go with a compromise budget, the structural problem remains next year.
Yep.
And the structure of the override that went out to Essex, this isn't judgment, does, did not give a multi-year pathway to addressing the problem. It was just to address the amount needed this year. So I think, you know, when I think about some of our conversations, just a byproduct of new eyes and new ideas, you know, we've talked about everything from cost of athletic socks to the number of budget actual sessions we have, to, you know, I'm definitely on board with, we need to present personnel differently in this spreadsheet budget. Those are all important things and good opportunities for growth for us. That has, they have nothing to do with the structural problem that's before us today. And they don't create necessarily any pathways to fix that. This is, this isn't problem 20 years in the making, or plus. We grow at or around three and a half. The capacity of one of our communities is two and a half. For us to achieve that, we need to run around 1% a year, not three and a half. So we annually will need to close that deficit. To close that deficit, over the past four years, we have been using attrition. So, program cuts, staffing cuts, based on enrollment to close the gap. That's where we've gotten most of our money those years. You'll, the cut budget represents the fact that we are running out of nameless, faceless cuts. So, the tools to manage going forward are fewer and fewer. We're around the edges right now in discretionary programming. It's not long that we're into the core. And we're just looking at class size increases overall. Do, do with, with that what you will. I'll come back to, we grow it three and a half percent to get to a two and a half percent, which is kind of the guarantee from Essex, where they tell us that they can, they can operate reliably. We need to come down to somewhere in the ones annually. So, that's the problem. That's before us. That's the little guy with the, the two pathways, which is, are we looking at restructuring or reorganizing what we are and what we do? Or are we looking for a way to push forward and continue with what we have, not meaning nothing ever changes? But I, I am really concerned with people who think that this, the annual reduction process is a gateway to creative change. I don't think it is. I've been doing budgets for over 20 years in schools, at the school level, the district level, departmental level. This is not the gateway for change. We need to be able to innovate, incubate, and run parallel tracks, and then start to peel out. That's, that's the creative way. That's the creative process. We have chaos right now in the district.
I'm sorry, I just did something in processing. You just said, something is not the gateway. What is not the gateway?
Annual reduction of budget, like, the, trying to incentivize us to meet a two and a half or a 1% goal is, is not the gateway for change.
Got it.
Not the change that I think this, the collective communities want to see. I think we need, we need room, we need resources to create, incubate, replace.
So can I start by saying then, just for the purposes of this workshop style, I will move that we set aside Robert's rules for now, so that we can have this as an informal discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation, discussion, while in favor? Okay, so, but that does not mean that we're not still orderly and that sort of thing. And before we begin, I would like to point out that we have two committee members with birthdays this week. Happy birthday. Thanks for spending it.
A big week for you.
Your, your week with us, but we have.
This is not the week I ambitioned.
We have cupcakes when you're ready for them.
Thank you.
We did not bring candles. All right.
You said two.
Two what?
Birthday.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Missed that. That's all right.
But you are 28.
My birthday is Joseph's birthday, so I raise you. I think it would be easier that way. We'll compare notes later. Teresa, can you give us an idea? I know, I'm sure everyone's pressed for time. I'm quite literally on a conference call. So I'm curious, the framework of today, do we have a hard end time? I know I do.
Yeah. Sorry, we covered that before we came in. We're gonna stop by, we said 90 minutes, so we're gonna stop by 1:45. Excuse me. And as far as framework, the, the point of today is just to have all our questions answered, so that on Tuesday night, Pam had mentioned this, we don't have to start from scratch, and we can actually deliberate efficiently and effectively. So who has questions?
You also missed, we also, I had Amy pencil in a Monday meeting, same time, in case we need more.
I don't know that this is a specific question. I just think of this as a roadblock. I feel like it's difficult to frame this conversation without a concept of what the compromise that the Essex FinCom and Manchester FinCom referred to, what their concept for that compromise is, right? Because compromise can be anything in between the budget that was presented on May 16th and the budget that was approved back in March. And so I think that it's important to remember that when they proposed the compromise, that their proposal was not necessarily supporting what Pam presented as a compromise, because I think that those, right, referring to them all by the same title, kind of muddied that up a little bit.
Yeah.
And I think that it would just, I think that we need more input as to what they expect that compromise to look like.
So, I can speak to that a little bit, and Jake was with me last night. The Essex FinCom met last night, and they had specific, Ben went around to get everybody's input specifically on this compromise as presented. And, and they didn't get too much into the two asks so much, especially the field. They did talk somewhat about the mediated budget process a little bit, but I think if I look at my notes, you know, I think Ben got verbal support for it from Six. So I think right now, that, at least for Essex, I believe that is what the compromise package is. They have not presented something else as a compromise. And I haven't received anything from Manchester that says they're presenting a thing. I think the language I was understanding was more that a compromise, something that's not those things. Go ahead, Erica, you can just jump in.
You know, I'm just gonna follow up on what Kate said. I feel like for me to be in a position to vote on Tuesday, the thing that would push me toward voting for a compromise proposal is an understanding of how we approach next year differently, and how we aren't right back where we are. And I think without having a real commitment from Essex that they are willing to engage in these two asks, one, I want to know that the fields are not going to be an issue, because otherwise we need to be planning for it right now. So, the, the two parts that we, that require a town commitment are the fields and the mediated budget process. And is there a way to get more of a, more feedback, or do you feel like this is as good as it gets? We know that they had a vote, and they're somewhat.
Well, finance committee met last night with the plan to make a recommendation, to have that conversation at the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday night. So by Monday night, we'll have a better sense of, because it's not FinComs, they make a recommendation, and it's the Board of Selectmen who can determine.
And then my, my follow-up to that is, having had some of my own conversations with Manchester town representatives, I do have a sense of what they were looking for in the compromise, but what I don't have a sense of, when this returns to Manchester town meeting, Teresa, I don't know if you can tell us, if you have a tally of how many emails you've received at this point, but the support for the original budget is overwhelmingly coming out of Manchester right now.
Yeah.
And so while we sit here and we talk about a compromise, I also want to keep in mind that there is a chance this shows up on the floor of Manchester town meeting, and a compromise isn't supported by the public.
And I, on Tuesday, I will have an actual breakdown of, in, in ways that you don't even want to know, of the emails that I have. But yes, I can tell you that overwhelmingly, so far from both towns, I have received overwhelmingly support for the original budget. However, a lot of that came in before the compromise budget was presented. I have, however, still received since then, a considerable number. But I'll have that breakdown, so everyone knows exactly what we're looking at, and, and that divide of before and after that.
Can we, so I think last Tuesday, was it last Tuesday? I think we met briefly before the, the open meeting, but we didn't get a chance to go over the details. So I have some questions about the detail on this compromise as presented, about the impact.
Can I just, can I speak to one point, Erica, raised? So probably what we've been short on is the concept behind a compromise, in the one that we're gonna talk about, that I was suggesting, is to try to preserve some goodwill to get to the longer-term solution by controlling the outcome to the extent we can. And that was the, the thought behind using our own E and D, even though it's completely against the whole premise of our original budget, but just to stop using reserves, because that's gonna, I think, if accepted in Manchester, tighten the timeline for turnaround. I did, I should share that I communicated with Brendan. I know Manchester's planning for June 28th as their date for a town meeting. And I don't believe they've had that conversation in Essex yet. And there was some question as to whether or not we could revert to the 2012 process of lowering the budget to an extent that met, met the Article 4 town meeting vote, and then using the 45-day wait period to allow it to become a budget. So it, in 2012, we had a similar situation. Both towns needed an override. It passed in Manchester. It did not pass in Essex. We used new resources that did come in from Chapter 70, nothing's coming in Chapter 70 this year, and we lowered the budget. We presented it to both towns. No town meetings were had. They just accepted it, the lowered number, and then we waited 45 days for the budget to become official. We've been advised by our special counsel, who will be here on Tuesday night to answer questions directly, that given where we are this time, we should ask, we should expect two town meetings to take place to affirm the budget, because of exactly the conversation we just had. One thing that may be welcomed by one group may not be welcomed by another, and we have no way to predict those outcomes. Even if we had board agreement, citizens could raise an issue and ask for a town meeting. So, he, he will be able to explain it in greater detail than I am, but I checked my phraseology with him, and he was comfortable with how I was explaining it. So I did relay that to Brendan. I just don't know where they stand at this point.
Can he get back to you? Remember, we had these questions before about if we do go to super town hall?
Yep.
And then it passes. What happens then?
The outcome is binding, and then it's for each town to figure out how to finance the outcome. So at that point, given where we are this year, if Essex still needed an override, it would need to pursue that independently. They, they have to come up with what, with the approach, what the appropriation formula says the bill is, and then figure out on their own how to fund it. I think there, you know, I can offer, if that doesn't give us, if that super town meeting doesn't give us the long-term solution, what's the climate for collaborative negotiations to get us to one after that event? I think that's a question. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't have an answer. But I think that's a consideration, so.
So, back to Anna's point.
Yep.
Could we have a clearer picture of what the compromise package looks like programmatically?
Sure. Do you have specific questions?
Well, what are the impacts of not, of cutting these positions, not?
Not field.
Clarifying, no one is being laid off, but of not hiring for the, the positions that are being vacated.
Because I think, you know, to Erica's point, and like what you said, Teresa, all these emails that came in before we showed that those are the physicians that could be, have some budget savings without billing, you know, rehiring back. And I don't know if, so what I'm struggling with is, like Kay said, I don't know, what is the programmatic impact? Because if we don't need to fill these positions without compromising the programs, and we're saving close to $500,000, then why not?
Well, that's, I feel like, we did get a handful of emails that were also kind of to the tune of, well, this is a no-brainer. If we, like, why didn't we just go with this to begin with? And I assume that it must be because there are implications on the program.
Yep. So if we look at this page, music.
Oh. Yeah, got it.
Here we go. So prior, instead, two things on music. In scheduling for next year, which began in February, Tricia removed the very low enrollment kind of Singleton Music Theory Piano Lab. So that has already been taken out of the budget, taken out of, off the schedule, offered in the program of studies, not run next year. So that is not part of this.
Wait, what does that mean, offered in the program of studies, but not run next?
Based on the subscript, based on the kids who enrolled to take it this year, and the numbers that were so low, and the feedback that we got, that we should be taking a title look at it, she made the judgment call originally at, in, when they signed up for classes the following year, to take those out of, take them off the book as an offering, but still keep the program in the program of studies, so that they could bring it back next year if interest grows. So if we grow our pipeline, and we have more kids, and we can get that number up to, I guess, to be debated in the future, five or eight, 10 or 12, then she can always put it, or Julie in the future can always put it back in an offering for the upcoming year. So they have some classes that just go dormant, when it doesn't look like there's a pipeline for them. The music cut is a cut against progress. So this, it was going to be our funding source to try and get to a program coordinator for the arts. So, it's a programmatic setback. Kids will still have one general music per week. Rock band will still be an option. Chorus band at the elementary will still continue forward. We won't take any additional staffing reductions at the elementary level. You'll still have chorus and band and general music as offered currently at the middle school. And you'll still have your band, chorus, soundways offering at the high school. We will not have, it doesn't make any sense to add a position when we're making cutbacks, cutbacks in other areas. So this is a cut against forward progress.
So it's really, it's not really attrition. It's just a.
It is attrition, because we intended to fund the position from someone who will no longer return to the district next year.
I see.
So what's, so what's, what's the delay in the progress that you mentioned? Can you be more specific?
Yep. We had in our budget that we would be using restructuring of music in the reduction of, of a position that we've had on the books this year, to fund the implementation of a program, a performing arts program coordinator, similar to an athletic director.
But not having that position, what's the impact?
The perception is, the impact is we have no coordination, no K-12 guide, no one championing the arts, no one trying to build and expand the program offering.
There was a lone email that came in from Shoshi about the impacts of not having a program director for the music program.
And so just to be clear, this, so, did you say, I'm sorry, did you say this, this does not then impact combining the two elementary? So, so this does not combine the two elementary at this point?
At this point.
And, and so there are no, you know, I'm trying to be careful with the wording, too. People who are currently employed don't need to worry about their jobs?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to say.
And we will be looking to create a 612 course and a 612 band position. So, there's multiple tracks happening.
Yeah.
Right? So in doing that piece, that will create a, a new vacancy, which would need to be posted. So whether or not there's movement within, for people who would prefer, because we have several part-time people who want a full-time position, that could create movement. But it's not movement due to budget reduction. It's movement due, due to restructuring the positions.
Got it.
Because right now, we have a bunch, we have brackets.
Yep.
I'd like to ask a really important question first, before we get too much more down the, all the specific questions. Why are we calling this a compromise budget, when we've already, like, for the past four years, compromised or made cuts? This year, with our original budget, we should have been, and I think was, a compromise budget and cuts. Why wouldn't we call this, at a minimum, a compromise of the compromise budget? Or why don't we, like, say what it really, why don't we say what it really is, is making cuts upon cuts upon cuts for the past four years?
Continued use of reserves budget.
Well, yeah, I would say that, right, we have the cut budget, which was the May 16th one. This is the cut and reserve.
Further. Structured reduction in reserve use.
Can I?
Yep.
Ask more?
But can we finish the, is that the only program implication of the? No, I can, let me, I was going to. All right, let's stay on performing arts, and then we'll try to close it out.
I think this is quick. But, so what, we have a retiring teacher in a certain position. You had planned to use those funds, otherwise, to fund a performing arts director. So, by not rehiring for this position, we're not addressing the program. Did I capture that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
So if we were in the 321 budget, I didn't, I don't envision the full cost of a performing arts coordinator to be that amount. If we followed the model, that would give us a few more investment dollars for performing arts. So we could come back with a, you know, a second-tier proposal that says, well, we can come up with some stipends for a drama teacher, or some, you know. So this was supposed to be investment dollars in performing arts. Why it's on this list? This is program expansion.
Right.
Right? It's not a substitution. I mean, we're funding it. It, this is a reinvestment, but for an expanded program. If we're being messaged that, that what we need to do is constrict the growth of the district, to make us smaller, so we run more, less extensively, it makes absolutely no sense to start to expand performing arts.
And then so, reducing this one would also be kind of consistent with what you were saying before about the level services.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
So this is not really a cut per se. It's really to bring it down to level services. Is that, is that right?
Yep.
Because there won't be programmatic.
Because there was a teacher there, teaching in and out. There's not.
And now there's not.
But programmatic-wise, not FTE-wise, programmatic, what would provide to the students? This is level services.
Yes. Yep.
So, so I think this is.
With the exception of piano lab and the one other.
But that was not in the original budget to begin with.
Well, it was.
It was?
It was, because the cuts came out in February, in response to enrollment. So yes, you could look, absolutely, there's a level service of music provided for next year. There are no reductions to opportunities for kids. There's no forward growth. And why I still think that original budget, even though it had the, the coordinator in it, I would still call it financially level services, because we're using an opportunity to reduce in one area, to reinvest in another. So I take your point that it can be confusing in terms of how you want to interpret the level services. We have, remember any of our budget documents? There's one that has the pyramid. So, we haven't asked for any additional money in the budget in 13 years to add a program coordinator, add a drama program. We've always taken it from either reorganizing something, restructuring the way a program exists, collapsing a program, or taking a retirement and enrollment, based on enrollment, where we're still maintaining flat class size, and trying to invest that, those dollars in a new thing. So, I'm saying level services, because there is no direct growth in this budget, ever. It's within three. It maxes at about three and a half percent. There's never been a pitch of, these are our wants. These are things that we even like to invest in. We've always tried to do it by reorganizing some aspect of the program to be able to achieve that. That's that concept of the parallel tracks a little bit.
Hey, this might be a stupid question, but have you considered promoting one of the existing music teachers into that program director role, or do they even have the capacity to take that on?
Yep.
In addition to their.
Great question.
Day-to-day.
Very good question. Yes, the position would still need to be posted, in the way we would need to negotiate. So there's, I'm gonna be frank, if we put it in the contract, it becomes a contract, a teacher contract position. So it's subject to all of those limitations, which means it's going to be negotiated. It would be a stipend within the contract, and it would probably follow our department head model, where they're reduced by one or two classes, plus a stipend on top. So you still need that extra money because of all of the outside of the day work.
Sure. And it's just the idea is that it doesn't have to be this amount, right?
Probably not $93,000.
Right.
So.
But once you start to reduce that person's load, you're but going to need to backfill the teaching.
Sure.
Right.
So it, that is about the, I don't think it would cost this much just for the coordinator. But if you do an assignment of, let's, if we use the athletic director model, it's 40% teaching, 60% athletics administration. Her day goes from about, we flex your schedule, noon to about nine or 10 at night. A many days, some, some periods are quiet, but, so if you use that same model, you would need to fund 40% teaching to make up for the sections this individual can't cover any longer.
Sure.
Plus, the 60% admin, so call that, on the current being, probably about $50,000, $60,000. So you're kind of back there.
Yeah.
It's a trade-off.
Yeah.
I want to ask a follow-up to Anna's question, because the programmatic issue I'm having trouble with, because it sounds to me like there is a programmatic cut. We have offered piano lab in the past. We will no longer be offering piano lab.
Nothing is cut. It's not black and white. It's not uncommon for the high school to not offer something in a year when they're only going to knowingly have one kid.
I appreciate that, but, but usually it will be on the schedule, and I think it was this year, as on, you see it, when your kids are registering for classes, you'll see piano lab, and you'll see it's like blacked out, not offered this year. But the way that usually works is kids can count on taking it the following year. And my point is, it doesn't sound like kids can count on taking it next year, because, so, so I'm just curious, when you say there's not a programmatic change, and this isn't a value judgment, but there is a change. And I, I think we should own that and decide.
Everything we're doing at this point limits the breadth of opportunity in a given year. So it may not, it may be piano lab this year, and that whole battery of electives that we talked about, but it could be something different next year. It, it's not a perfect science of where the interest is for students year to year. So yes, it absolutely narrows the breadth of the program for next year. And then we can get into, is it a good idea or a bad idea for, for the projected number of students that would be enrolled?
I just think we want to describe it that way, and, and own it, and decide if that's the direction we want to go, rather than, than saying it's level services, because it's not. To me, at least, that's, that's my perception.
So I just want to, I want to be aware that we're, if we're on a time crunch.
We have done, we've gotten through the first wire.
So we might want to just, just hit, rather than worrying about the value of these things, but just actually take in what exactly is the implication.
Another example, like, we can manage the library program at the elementary with one librarian split between two schools. It's not the same type of program you would have if you had a single librarian in the two elementaries and one here. So, we can deliver the teaching component of it, and then whatever extras she can build in, but it's not the same level of program.
Okay.
Elementary classroom is probably the most. Elementary classroom is probably the most straightforward, but also the one that starts to get us into the danger zone. It's just, we have a retiring teacher. We have at Memorial, two grade levels that have been running at three sections, not just two sections. If we reduce one more teacher, that will leave one grade level that has the capacity for three input and roll. Uh, class average fifteen, sixteen, it's low, not gonna lie, it's low. But that's a utility player, so to speak, because all of the other grade levels are now starting to bump up to twenty-two. So right now it's scheduled at fifth, John's gonna wait and watch and if he needs to drop it back to first grade, because that's a better use of the personnel, so be it. I can't recommend going down one more. Because then I don't have a, if I knew we were getting an override next year, all on the same page and there was going to be reinstatement.
Yeah.
I would say let's take the chance right now because we've got some retirements, it's not going to impact anyone. We can't count, I can't count on that and that leaves me with no maneuverability if we get. Sometimes a class of fifteen can feel like a class of thirty, given the makeup, given the needs of the students in there. We need to have some capacity to manage either a little bit of an enrollment bump or some, some classes that have extensive needs.
But just so we understand, uh, programmatic impact for all these positions, so this one is truly like.
I would say that one's most neutral.
Neutral, okay.
Health wellness. This one bothers me the most probably because this is our key investment area.
Yes.
In terms of social emotional learning. Uh, so what we put back in this, the one point oh shouldn't be there. I, I need to fix that because what we're.
Wondering who was making that salary for one point oh.
Well, well, the, the savings is thirty-five, six, we're assuming an M one salary for a long-term sub. So two things I'm concerned with here. Um, with a long-term sub, they'll, all of the, that concept of thirty kids and specialists. And it only meeting thirty out of sixty days, all of that comes off the table. Same meeting time, no overflow impact to other specials. The concern, and this may have been a concern regardless of the budget. Whether we will find a long-term sub suitable for the role. For the year.
Right.
And if not, then we will just look at other, it could end up being a savings in the end. Because I think that submission, you know, that's, we need a certain profile.
To fund this, right? The reserve usage to fund.
Yeah, we took this down from the full salary.
So I just want to clarify, yeah, I think I'm clarifying, so the thirty-five, six is the savings, that the long-term sub is in. Here, yeah, okay, yeah, because that's the part that's not there.
Yeah, I think it was like, I think it was like the ninety.
Yeah.
Proof.
Yes.
And again, so I sit in a pivot point between students, parents, faculty. So some of these are, we try to be student-centered and students drive the decision-making. But there is that art of trying to manage the workforce in this as well. So when somebody steps up to say, I'm personally going to request a leave for a year and you could save another job, that's the logic behind that. So like I said, that one's been keeping me up nights.
Are there any um, are there rules about how long we can fill positions with long-term subs? Because surely if we're, if you're hiring the same person as a long-term sub, year after year after year, at some point, they should be on a teacher contract.
Yeah, they accrue time and then they'll come, typically if they're here for the second year, they go right onto the contract. And LTSs are covered by the contract. There's some language um, in the statute about um, your, we, we call it teacher tenure. And it's the first day of the fourth calendar year. But there's a carve-out in there that long-term appointments don't count toward it. So that's, that's one of the things that we will debate with the association because they want the person to have the benefit of time in. Typically, when you're hiring an LTS, it's because it's very late in the season. And you don't have, you know, as big a hiring pool as you would like to see, so you kind of want to reserve your options going forward. We try not to do it more than two years in a row. You do see some people who, that's their thing, they like to do long-term sub gigs. They may be retired and they'll come in for kind of the six months since, um, and once in a while a year. So it kind of depends on the status of the person and whether they're an up-and-comer trying to land the job or whether they're just working in retirement, right?
So this position, the thirty-five thousand dollar savings is because that person more than nine, uh, not thirty-five thousand is on leave. And we're having a sub coming in, so saving thirty-five thousand.
Yep. So you'd like to know that our long-term subs are capped for an annual salary of either bachelor's one or master's one.
But let's say next year, the person that went on leave comes back, this, the budget will plus thirty-five thousand, if his expenses are right, right?
Yes.
So.
This is a one-year savings.
Yeah, yeah, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good to know.
Yeah, just like on the, on the actual budget, um, we have. And this one has been driving you nuts all year, Anna, because we've been putting this person on and off the general fund. We have a math specialist that was hired, position created through the ESSR funds. Originally started on ESSR mid-year uh, last year. Thinking we were going to have the correction this year, we took that position and put it back into the budget. Because the ESSR is a, it's a funding cliff, right? It gives you the startup money, but it doesn't follow you and makes no. It's up to you to take it over in the end. So when it looked like we were going to have an opportunity to correct, we put him in the bud, we put that position in the budget. When we were scrambling to try to find ways to cut without impacting programming kids, we moved him, moved that position back to the ESSR grant.
Which again, it's just a one-year savings.
One-year savings, funding clip, we're gonna need next year thirty-six, just to start, thirty-six plus, what did I say, eighty-eight, ninety?
Is this our, he is our only math interventionist?
That segues into the reading specialist.
But he is.
No, we have two.
Okay.
This year we have two. Plus a point seven reading specialist, a point five reading specialist, title one. And a one-point-oh reading specialist, so one point, two-point-two reading. Point five dedicated title one and then two math. All of that generated from um, need over time. Give you the short history, long-term problem solving. We don't need to revisit the literacy, but the literacy shift to um, a science of reading-based approach. Was to bolster tier one to then reframe intervention. We took our first level of savings in the event, in intervention reorganization last year. We took all the individual school-based people, made them district-wide and now distribute based on case need by school and evaluate that three times a year. In that initial reorganization, we eliminated, like, I'll forget the FTE count, but a small handful of reading TAs. So we were able to improve the quality of instruction. No, because of the qualification, no, no judgment on the individuals and their dedication. We were able to move all kids to seeing a teacher, not just a TA, take a savings there and create greater efficiency in the program. We've talked and talked, we, we have a retirement in one of the math specialists this year. We feel confident that we can take the point seven reduction in reading. Have that person move into the math specialist vacancy to keep two full-time math for next year. Take a small reduction in reading, but also know we have a utility player who can swing back and forth. And meet needs both in reading and math, should we need um, extra in either area.
Is that person a career reading specialist?
They're both. They have a math qualification and actually interested in pursuing math in other district before this happened. So it, it's something that worked out well.
Yep.
Uh, we'll have to revisit it next year. But I think what we like about the new model is it's flexible and the team has a lot of talent. And they have a lot of capability. So if we're seeing us, an uptick in reading and a downtick in math, we can use the personnel to, to meet the need of the kid.
But do we have the staffing levels to do that after the point seven reduction?
I'm fairly confident that, I think we need to watch it next year. But logic follows, if we are going down in enrollment, we should be able to manage some reduction in the reading specialist. I think what's making us a little nervous, um, and probably you a little nervous, is we're still dealing with that residual COVID issue. Again, we.
Right.
Yeah, and I talked to the principals on this, I talked to Angela and the team, we feel like we, they feel like they can manage it. And they're looking at some external resources, there's some pieces coming out from DESI that they're going to pipeline some tutoring. Opportunities into the districts, whether or not they'll find personnel in this area, whether or not we'll actually qualify for it is another. Is another question. But this is something where if we were struggling, we could certainly come back to you. I could come back and say, we need to hire somebody mid-year and we're gonna cut this or move this over to do it.
But to sum up, this thirty-six thousand is similar to the sixty-nine thousand, eleven to the classroom teacher. It's kind of level services, no change to programming.
I'm not comfortable saying it's full level services at this point. We're, we're hoping we can meet that, but we're reducing us seventy percent of, of a point seven. So seventy-seven, seventy percent reading specialist teacher, we're going down.
Right, but with the, you, you just said that with the enrollment dropping that you guys feel comfortable, so do you?
They feel, if we didn't have to cut money, no, we would not be offering this. But in terms of going through and looking at trade-offs and what can we live with, what can we live without? They're saying this is a place where we can not impact anyone's job. Everyone remains employed. The, the skill level of the people there, we think we can manage what we believe to be the caseload next year, but it's not ideal. None of this is ideal, so I would hesitate to say we're all behind this. If, if we were behind this, we would have had that in the original budget. If this was, you know, nothing that wasn't going to keep us up at night or cause the principals and, and the director to not have to think differently about how to provide the services. Or ask people to do more with less, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have put it forward. Maybe, were we always monitoring and hoping at some point we could make a reduction? Yes, would we have brought it for this year? No.
Anna, where I see the risk with, with this one, and I had followed up with, I had emailed Allison Collins about this also. Um, because I think of the interventionist as like that first line of defense. Addressing these knowledge gaps before kids end up needing special education services. So twenty-six percent of our students who are currently in special education are in special education for a learning disability. And so my concern is that if we are not in a place to provide robust intervention, especially in the early grades, that long-term the repercussions can be those kids ending up in special education and it becomes more costly. To deliver those services later than to deliver the interventions now.
So that's the exact right point, because the story that you told just about this program in general talks specifically to how over the past several years, we've been working to become more efficient as a school district. Lower costs for programming, everything that we've talked about that we continually do to try and you know, take into account the limited resources that are attached to.
Absolutely.
So it's manageable, but it's a risk.
And this is a short-term decision that could have long-term impacts of cost increases.
And we, this isn't the day to go into it, but I mean, when we talked about the numbers in November, there's, we're striving for parity in so many areas. We do have some deficit in terms of skills in a couple of our, our schools. And addressing it at the elementary level and putting in the resources there should help to change the deficit and outcomes between the two elementary schools and also aid the middle school. Where the two schools are coming together and you can see that there's some struggle with the, with the scores. Scores aren't everything, but they're a good indicator and we haven't hit parity there yet, so. Remember, we're pushing resources to where the kids are identified with need based on three years, cyclical benchmarking.
So from educator perspective, um, like this is not a risk that we want to take, would you say? Or how, how would you assess this?
It's a risk.
I would say it's a risk.
Calculated risk. That we can measure continually through the year because we, you know, we collect data i- in different ballpark. It, a whole different arena than the elementary classroom. Elementary classroom, level services, reading specialists, we're reducing. We're reducing the number of people that are a- addressing interventions and think, we believe we can manage it to a successful outcome. I can't guarantee it.
So it's kind of falling to the category of that music position, like we can manage it, but it's not ideal.
Um, more, it's more det, more detrimental than music. I mean, and this is no, you, you know, no, we have very passionate music parents and it's, and it's wonderful to see. But this, that top music piece is really about advancing the program and trying to get to another level. These pieces, elementary classroom, health wellness, this is, you're in the basic core program now.
And that brings us to the math and science.
Math and science wasn't, is going to reduce the number of sections we can offer. But because of enrollment, we can consider this a level service. This is based on a retirement that became known to us after the budget. This is not a new teacher, this is not a junior teacher, this is a known science department retirement.
So we talked about this last time, you said it's, uh, we are able to reduce this, we bring it down to level services. Because we, especially with the math troubles in this past few years. It's because we plan for uh, over-hiring a little bit for one position and now we're reducing.
Last year, we knew we were going to have some um, leave issues at the beginning of the year. So we hired after budget two additional math teachers to make sure we had certified qualified people available. And Tricia did some things with splitting schedules, make, purposefully making very small classes on either side. So that if someone went out, classes can be combined. So there was a whole series of things done to prepare for anticipated outages in the fall. That all went off smoothly, so when we had retirements that came during the year, that's why we initially put out in the original budget, one math reduction, so that was one of those extra positions. And now this, although in science, we have some people who can swing between math and science coming out of the science department. This is the second head reduction, because we do have someone that teaches between the two. So why is this level services? Because by reducing these, taking these departmental retirements out. She can still create sections that are within the general benchmark.
So does this fall in the category of the elementary classroom reduction?
Yeah, I would put it there right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Of the retirement public knowledge, I've been asked by people and looked at this, whether or not we can identify who's been hired.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and they'll be here next Tuesday to celebrate. Yes. Yes, that's a senior science teacher.
I have questions about, so my pause with this one. Despite it still being level services, my pause is the number of emails that we historically, historically have gotten from parents. Um, concerned about teacher absences. So reducing by one FTE is one fewer person who's available to help with that?
No. No.
Have we looked into the, and have we looked into having an in-house sub at the high school?
We can go back to hiring.
And I know that we can't, like, I know that we're not looking to expand the program or whatever, but how, I just wonder what the cost of having.
I mean, I, I, we can certainly go back to hiring day subs as needed. So what we do now is we hire one person who TA level, who um, man's, woman's the auditorium. And then if teachers are out on a one-off, like I have to go to a five oh four meeting.
Right.
Or, you know, I just, kid's sick, I can't come in today, they're redirected there. Lessons are in, are supposed to be in Google Classroom, they're supposed to have active work to do. But we kind of put it under one person's um, supervision. We could go, absolutely go back to when a teacher is out hiring a sub per individual to cover classes within the classroom, that's, we can do that. I think one of the reasons we moved to this model was both cost-effective.
Right.
And a um, not enough subs. So you, you likely can go, we can certainly go back to and try to place subs in the classrooms. Whether we'll have subs on a given day is a different question, so we could end up right back in the same situation. I think I'll just, I'll reiterate when we looked at the numbers, ninety-five percent attendance rate. But there are outliers and I think they need to be addressed as a personnel matter. That being said, you, you negotiated, there's a, there is a significant benefit in the contract around sick time, leave time. And what they're legally entitled to. So I can say with a high level of confidence that people overwhelmingly work within their benefit.
Right.
allotment and the restrictions that are placed on them. That's not saying everyone does and I think we need to take those on as individuals. I don't think there's like a universal thing we can do that's going to stop it.
I'm just wondering if on a day-to-day basis, there's always one person absent in this building between the middle school and the high school. What is the cost of having a full-time employee whose job it is to be that person?
It can only be in one place at one time, so it would be eighty-five thousand, let's call it eighty-five thousand. Maybe it's an M ones, five thousand. Maybe it's an M ones, five thousand or five periods of coverage a day. But it's a full-time teaching salary at that level. You could hire a bunch of TAs, you could hire one TA, let's call it thirty.
I think I've gone down the.
Yeah, can we?
Yeah, no.
It's it's a great conversation to have.
Yeah, got it.
It it doesn't solve, if the issue, if the concern is the absenteeism, it's not going to solve the absenteeism. One could argue it makes it easier because you know somebody's at the ready. Um, so I think two things on absenteeism. Overwhelmingly, people are doing, are here, present and working hard with your kids. We always have outliers that falls in that five percent category. And I think there has been raised awareness and very much a commitment to addressing that through our evaluation process.
So let's put, we'll put that in the summer list for conversation.
Yep.
Questions?
Since today we're in reducing money, not adding, so. Okay, so that covers that page. Do we all understand the implications of the staffing reductions in that budget?
And if you flip it, I don't know if this is on the front or the back.
Right.
This one?
Where's its Spanish?
I think we covered some of this, the grade six Spanish, we just, that's just in its holding pattern. The late bus is still a cut. Small cap is still a small cut. We changed the not all non-meda cola. And the four-point-six paras are, we are very comfortable with that reduction.
You are, without changing any programming that TAs?
Without changing any programming.
Level services?
Yep.
Okay.
Part of it is packaged with a, this is confusing and doesn't do anything to this bottom line, but we also have a swap of positions. So in terms of efficiencies and changing, um, there's a, there's been a need to to bring the ACE program that began at the elementary school. We need to add a classroom with that at the middle school to do that. We have, uh, Allison has cut a position at the elementary level to fund that. So that that's one of those, you cut one thing, but another thing comes in its place. So it's neutral in terms of heads, but it's um, it's a, you know, it's efficiently taking care of a program. It's not an expansion of program need in terms of specialized, it's kids who are identified and getting a service now moving to a new school. Um, part of a cohort that at the, at the school that they're in still need that service. So we need to change some personnel up and bring them here. So part of that restructuring yielded some of this paraprofessional savings because they're going to put a teacher where there was a set of paras before.
Yeah.
So yes, very comfortable on that. And then we make up the difference by eliminating people who are leaving and will require unemployment and adding in reserves.
So do we have other questions on this then, on the the reserves or the, what, anything else to do with this? Because now's the time, we have about a half hour left for our.
I have one question, I needed to some of the feedback we've gotten from community. There's been at least some, some type of movement in favor of have we looked at admin costs as carefully as we can? And I'm not familiar enough with, obviously you're in control of what those positions are. But is there anything further we can do to create efficiencies? And I think that's particularly in contrast to people see us reducing teachers, student facing.
So and on that, with that, you're probably going to do this anyway, but if you could help us understand, because maybe not everybody listening in future might understand the value of the dean position, especially because we're, we're getting, I'm getting input about that.
A couple of things on admin, which is kind of a big umbrella topic. It means different things at different levels. So the true admin, what you see in the budget as admin is business office, central office. There's some technology in there, basically things that make the district run and things that are larger than typical in a regional district. If you do a survey of, um, you know, the per pupil expenditure or the total district expenditure breakdown of other districts, our administrative outlay makes up about four percent of the budget as of the twenty-two year. Which is on par with two and a half percent districts like Drake it in Georgetown, in fact, we're lower. Where we are a little bit higher is in our instructional leadership, which is our principal group. When we compare percentage-wise, we I think are about six percent. I do think Georgetown may be at about four. We run two elementary schools, so we pick up a person there. And we have committed to a different model at the secondary than they have, which is they are currently running a one district K six elementary school, I believe, they have a principal and assistant principal. But then they run a seven-twelve model at the high school. Um, we run a middle school and a high school. We did some extents when we were looking to replace principals many years ago. We did do a lot of work with the community around what they wanted and it was a commitment when this building was built to create a middle school model. But that's, that's the theory behind having two teams, a a principal and a dean at the middle and a principal and a dean at the high school to manage. Those six people with a little bit of um, the specialized specialized program oversight, those six people do all supervision and evaluation of all people in the district. So if we have a hundred and forty-some-odd meter members, teachers, it's divided amongst those people. So it's a, I think it's a supervision concern if you cut back anymore. We can certainly always look creatively toward the, in the future if there's a different way of going about it. My guess is it would be a complete restructuring. It's not, it'll be similar to the music conversation we've had. If we pull something over here, you're going to need to add something over here. So if we wanted to take out a dean, we may look at creating department heads that can actually sit in a different unit. It would move to administration so they could evaluate teachers to take some of that load off.
Which means we then need to add teachers to pick up that slack.
So in terms of your total cost, um, we're a little bit higher, caring, I would say we carry an extra dean compared to Georgetown. But I think it's a good cost benefit. The other thing we've done is we all think of the vice, the assistant principal and the vice principal from when we were in school. And it was the person meeting you at the door when you were tardy, it was the person sitting with you in detention. We have very purposefully shifted those positions to be our lead S E L people in each of those buildings. Um, and really taking on a proactive approach to managing students toward positive outcomes. It doesn't always show itself, it may not be your personal experience. We have students who are school avoidant, it's the deans that go to the home to counsel in the morning and try to bring kids into school. We have families that are D C F involved. We have kid, there's, there is a lot going on in students' lives and these are our frontline people. We came to the dean position at the middle school several years ago by restructuring um, our guidance program. Uh, we had an academic guidance counselor and a part, and a partial adjustment counselor. We restructured those roles, moving resources from one place to another to fund the dean. There was no direct add to the budget. Principal felt it was important, I felt it was important to have support for the principal. We went through a principal cycle without a dean, person burnt out within a few years. It's more than they could manage. So I think if we were to pull that piece out, we would probably look at adding some type of counseling support above and beyond the guidance counseling because this individual is serving that dual role. So that's just a little bit about our structure. I I don't think we are astronomically higher, that, and those are two and a half percent districts. Now, if we look at like districts, if we take a survey of the North Shore, we carry the same administrative structure, combination of central office and building base as Hamilton went on. Or, I mean, we beat Masco every time because they run three independent elementary systems. And they have superintendent at the elementary level and a superintendent at the secondary level. So that's not a good comp for us. I think it's money, I think it's an investment well made.
Do you want to, can you speak briefly just to remind us all? So non-medicola, I know it started at four, we had that in the original. When was the last time? I know it's been a while. So what what has been the history on cola increases for all non-medicola personnel, just to have a refresher?
Two point five.
Two point five.
Two point five. Thank you. Over here for. As a blanket, every year there have been, not in the past five years, times when contract renegotiations may yield a catch-up half or point. I think this is one of those things that it's not level services, we have it in tight. Paras aside, we're going to negotiate a pair of contracts, they're going to have advocates at the table. And I think there's some, some things we'll, we'll have to do as part of that process. So I think I'm okay with make, allowing that process to drive that. I've tried to articulate, we have a growing gap between our middle management, right, our, our instructional leaders in our admins um, with other districts. People who have been in district a long time have the value of time and those salaries may seem higher. But it's just an accumulation of two and a half percent. We are going to, we we are seeing it now in in searching for the dean role where people are being ruled out and asking to see the contract upfront because our dean structure is two hundred and four days, it's not a twelve-month position. And it's paid, it used to be paid just about the same as a top-tier teacher, but I think they're sinking below it now with the new contract. So what we're hearing from a couple of candidates that um, we were very positive about is that it's financially a disadvantage for them to leave the teaching position.
Twenty days more work for, for less pass.
Is that normal, that just how it is?
No, it's because of, it's because of keeping the cola at two point five.
Because the teacher's overall contract has, has moved with a two and a half cola at about a three and a half or four. Some people move it solid two and a half if they're capped out, but let's call it a three and a half. So if you take three and a half over five years versus two and a half over five years.
You're going to catch up.
Or they're not keeping pace.
So is it your opinion that this reduction really doesn't make sense because we're not going to be able to be competitive?
It's my opinion that we have to try to commit, we have some new people coming in. We'll have to look at bump, like if they have successful first years, we can look at making adjustments there. I'm torn on this one between the honesty and the transparency argument, right? So we put it out there transparently, but this is what we think needs to happen based on the math, not based on anything else in terms of keeping these position levels at the same pace of growth as the rest of the district. It obviously is, it's a large cola number and it was met with different inputs. We can certainly just deal with individual contractor renewals as they come up and try to make some gains there. If the committee's comfortable with that, I'm, I'm, we can go about it. None of this is good.
Right.
But it's, it's a way to save job, a job.
Right. I think between that and between some of the proposals, not on this one specifically, but on the um, cut budget for all of these fractional positions, I think it, we are looking like a riskier and riskier employer. And I think that we, especially if we are trying to hire for fractional positions, I think that that we should go into that knowing that may be impossible to find somebody who wants a point four music.
Not very dramatic. It's, it's starting, like counsel people who are going to be a point eight. Try to hold on for a couple of weeks until we have a better lens on things. I anticipate some resignation letters in the next few days.
Yeah.
So we're going to want to keep these programs, I don't know if we're going to have the staff.
Right.
To run them at this point.
Can I recommend, um, I hate to say this because we're talking about the fifty-two thousand, but I I do feel this is more of a perception. Um, especially when both towns, and I mentioned this before, that both towns employees and the non-unions ones are getting two point five, two percent. Uh, and that's why the the noise.
Not all the town, so not the town administrator at Essex has three percent, the treasurer has three percent.
Not, so the, according to your incomes, the positions, they're non-union, so I don't know if they're different categories. There's some, most of the categories, non-unions are two point five or two percent. Um, now that being said, I wonder if we can separate this. Uh, because I think the non-union, the the admin people, there is the really business unit, there is the programmatic unit. And I think people's feelings about this too might be different. But I don't know if you want to go down that road because it's only fifty-two thousand, um, but just a thought.
Well, I'll speak to that just for a moment, um, and I will just do the thing of calling a spade a spade.
Yep.
People don't like how much money you make.
Okay.
We've all talked about this individually, we know this to be the case. So there's an argument as far as, you know, personally, what you personally do versus a category of should superintendents at a school district this size make that much? Versus should superintendents generally make, make that much? I think that we're really at risk knowing that we have, um, we have someone who is quite experienced. You've been here for a while, this has been building for a while as well. But when we already know that we're becoming a riskier employer, I think that when it comes, whatever our opinion is about that, when it comes to cherry-picking individual positions for cola raises or not cola raises, I just think we need to be very careful about doing that. And if we want to do that, we might be better served doing it when we're not in crisis and having a conversation generally about, do we wish to split some of this out? There are some districts where, where it is split out, like custodial versus paras versus business office.
So something to be wary of.
Yeah.
Those are districts that have unions for all of those divisions. We have one union, the TAs, I don't know how we've gone this long without them organizing.
Yeah.
Have decided to organize, everything else is contract services. So if, if you're saying, let's give everybody, pull me out and give everybody else four, that's fine.
So I guess what I'm saying is I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I, I'm not suggesting that it's not worthy of, worthy of discussing, but I don't know that taking, taking this apart, I, I, I personally would rather say we either leave or, or don't leave this fifty-two thousand dollars. Like this is what, this is just what this means, rather than right now while we're in crisis, pulling those apart and, and picking.
Well, if it means advancing everyone else, then I would separate it up.
I'm going to change the topic here.
Okay, then, then hold, I don't think we are, I think we're in the middle of this.
I want to say one thing about that, which is simply that I think there's a perception.
Sure.
Issue, I think, um, could be worth thinking about separating it out to avoid that argument.
Yeah. And that's fair, and that's a, a vote we can make. So if you want to, um, if we're, if we're asking to break that out so that on Tuesday, that's something we could contemplate so we can know how much money we're actually talking about to do that, um, and then we can discuss that further. Okay, Jake, you wanted to change the subject?
Yeah, I want to go um, to the reserve use question. So um, I sent everybody, and I think we have a copy of it around, if you don't have it in front of you, um, what it might, for purposes of discussion, what it might look like if we did not use reserves and instead just changed budget ask of the town and what that would mean in terms of like a revised uh, budget and a revised override in Essex. And I used the same two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, you know, Pam put in her proposal in terms of the E and B use. So to me, the.
Sorry, can I just make sure I'm.
No, you're looking at the thing, it was sent via email.
I think we have.
If anybody else might get into their email, it's requiring.
You also, you missed that one. Support. Yes, have your cupcake.
Anyone else?
Pass the.
Pass the cupcake.
Sorry, Jake, I just want to. Eric, can you pass this down?
No, I'm busy having a cupcake.
So, so to me, the concern of using reserves this year is we are, we are putting ourselves right back in the situation next year. Right, either we are going, you know, we almost are guaranteed that the reserve use is either going to increase next year or we're going to have to ask for another override to close that gap again. Yep. So to try to avoid that, um, I'm, I'm thinking that it's worth putting a slightly revised budget to the towns without an expectation of us using our reserves for operations. Still approach it from a compromised position, in other words, we do reduce the budget a bit, right? And I'm using the same kind of two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number there, which any, basically anything over the, the full seven hundred eighty-one Essex is that has to go to override situation. So in, in essence, whatever number you choose to reduce by, we are, would push us into an override position. Uh, and so I use the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm not talking about individual cuts here. You know, we, we just went through all of that, it could be any, any of those or any combination of those that we think is worthwhile. But the um, overall effect then would be a perception of a lower overall budget, but one that still kind of raises our floor for, you know, as, as two and a half adjustment or whatever the adjustment is going to be for next year. Uh, it still requires an override, but it's a lower override in Essex, which we can debate whether or not we have a chance of that or not. Does not commit us to using operation, uh, reserves for operations. We can still have the conversation whether or not we should use reserve for fields. Right? Because one of the concerns in Essex is that not only are we asking for an override on operations, but then we'll be coming, you know, for additional money for the fields. Our original plan was to pay for the fields out of our reserves. That is a capital expense, right? That makes more sense. But then the other component to the no vote that we're hearing in Essex was it's not just about the money. It's also about how we do our business and are we doing due diligence? Can we assure the voters that we have indeed found, you know, as much efficiency as we can? I think the fact that we're having this conversation now about program, kind of, you know, at the end of the year, suggests that we need a better way to do that in the future, right? Not only do we have to figure out how to change our engagement with the towns, we need to figure out how to change our approach to this work. So that's where the kind of three bullets around the chain of school committee operations comes from. Collaboration mediation, we've already been talking about. Adding a program subcommittee would be having to allow us to have this kind of conversation during the budget process, right? So we know what, what the implications are and we know kind of what, what we're supporting. And then the, the third one there is add budget to our, what is currently a finance subcommittee, right? We don't have a way of looking into our budget right now. We're just kind of looking at the town negotiations as, as our focus. So to me, the intent here is to, to allow us to have that discussion of what does it look like if we don't use our reserves for operations and instead put out a slightly revised budget for the towns to consider.
So I have a question for you on this. So I guess what I'm not seeing here, so you're saying instead of the 252 in reserves, you're saying looking at this compromise package, instead of the 252 in reserves, ask for 196 as an override instead and take an additional 56K in reductions in program cuts.
So what I'm saying is that reduce our budget requests of the towns from the 29, 750, reduce it to 29, 500. Right? We have to figure out how to cut that 250.
Right. So I, no, I understand that.
And then, but then we only have to cut by 250.
He's not looking at this compromise.
I'm not looking at.
You're not looking at the compromise.
I only referred to that because I was using the same kind of 250 amount.
The whole thing. Okay.
We could reduce that budget by more if you wanted, but, but I was just using 250 as a round number for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Based on what had been in that proposal.
And if it's only cut by 250, what you're saying is the override amount for Essex instead of 287,000.
290.
196.
Yes.
And do you think that $92,000 change my persuasion?
That's what I'm hoping. Whether I know that, I have no idea, but that's what, that's what I'm hoping. It's, it shows that we've adjusted the budget down a little bit.
Yeah.
It shows that we are asking for less in terms of the override. And it shows that we are responsive to the need to change how we're working and we've already been talking about that.
So can we ask about, talk about the reserves in front of the same topic? Um, I get that there's a capital expense by years on the reserve, the total potential reserve. Because some funded by the grants, some funded by the building fee, whatever that is, and then the reserve portion is 1.4 million over the next five years. I get that. And so out of our existing 3.4 minus the 1.4, the potentially the cap backs that we need. The field is the one that we don't know, that if we will have to take out 1.2 million dollars, that would be a big chunk. But if we don't have to, if we get some kind of commitment that if that Essex will pay for their portion of 300 to 400,000 dollars of the field cost. We won't have to be, but I get your concern about the difficulty of trying to go back to both towns when you, when we do need it. But if we do have 3.4 minus the 1.4, the over the next five years, that we're still talking about pretty healthy of $2 million of the reserve that we can still operate within, assuming we don't use that for operating. Is that something, I think at some point, we need to talk about internally.
Seven million in commitments against 3 million reserves.
What?
Something of.
If the Essex project doesn't go through, that's the liability.
Oh, he's at Essex. Yeah.
Yeah, not commitment, not commitment, but liability.
The liability, not commitment. So the liability could happen tomorrow, if you have in five years, it could be 7 million, it could be 70,000. So I think about what we know.
It won't be 70,000. But I get your point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You get one of my points. But what you lay out in the cover expense, at least those are concrete, the planning thing that we know that we need. So at some point, we do need to discuss as a committee, as a board, how comfortable is the reserve level? Are we comfortable with the $2 million roughly reserve level? Are we comfortable, knowing that Essex Elementary might have something going on? Or are we comfortable? Or are we not comfortable? Like we really wanna keep it at 3.4 or do, you know, something we do need to, because I do think that will start with a basis.
Yeah, and I also think that.
But I think it's part of, I don't think it's part of this now, unfortunately.
Well, I also.
Could be, but.
Jake's point makes reserves. We, we have to decide in order to proceed to evaluate between Jake's proposal and the compromise budget Pam put forth. We need to know how seriously committed we are to new users at the level they are because Jake's whole point is, is putting forward another override in order to protect our reserves. I'm not, I don't know how I feel that straight up, but the value of the reserves.
Let me reframe this just a little bit. We are committing, we are committing to use the reserves no matter what. Either it's $500,000 this year and some even more higher number next year if we don't get an override next year, which is gonna be significant.
That's a different conversation.
Right? Or, you know, we are using reserves for capital in some way, right? So we're using it no matter what.
More, and to me, it's more about what we are using our reserves for rather than what level we're comfortable with. I am much more comfortable funding cap, one-time capital expenses out of reserves, including, including the entire cost of the fields. If it means that we are able to reset our operating budget at a level where we can continue to offer a quality program and not have to worry about growth.
One other thing that goes to, to your point though, to have, because we've been trying to do this for a couple of years, to talk about our reserve policy, right? What, what do we think is appropriate to have in our reserves categories here? One thing that's gonna be helpful, but sadly we won't know until November is whether Essex Elementary gets picked up in this round. But we won't know. If, if, if it's not, if it is, then we have a very different outlook. It's like, let's, let's just hobble along. But if it's not, then we could have a bigger requirement on our reserves.
Another year of delay or does that mean like multiple years?
Year by year.
Year by year. So another year.
I think you also have to, you know, let you guys discuss it. You also need to consider the probability of it getting picked up and it actually making it to a funded project.
Right.
You're gonna have a feasibility vote. You're gonna have to outlay reserves. Last time we did a feasibility, it was a three-way split. I think across them was about $800,000, assuming it'll be a little bit higher at this point. You'll need a small portion of our reserves for that and then reserve commitments from the two towns. And then you're gonna need a vote on a, what will likely be another $50 million project. So a lot has to happen between now and then and.
I don't know. I can count on any of it.
You can't count on any of it.
Make a quick comment about reserves. So I, this is just what I've been picking up over the years based on other districts. Working with people who help us to borrow money in a way that saves the most money for taxpayers, you know, with no other goal other than to keep the cost of taxpayers low. And, you know, I think S and P, pretty well-known brand name in credit ratings. Granted, there's lots of different opinions. To me, removing reserves from the operating budget is a smart multi-year strategy that we have been trying to do and it's best practice. The numbers that we're talking about are smaller, but if you're doing it every year, it's a huge problem. So a small number in the operating budget temporarily to me is not concerning if you truly are on a path to a multi-year correction.
Yeah.
By contrast, yes, we wanted people to know that we had the money and reserves to pay for the turf field, 1.2 million, and we do. So that was our way to say, we've been saving up for the rainy day. We're ready to go. However, replacing 1.2 million dollars is very hard. And whatever you spend out of your reserve fund, even if it's on a five-year capital plan, you need to have a strategy to say, how are you going to ensure that in year seven and eight and nine on a sustainable basis, we are just being responsible to, because there's gonna be a year six of a capital plan after year one goes away, et cetera. So we, if we spend the 1.2 on the turf fields, we need a plan. And I think the financial advisors could not have been clearer. Do not spend anything that you don't have a plan on how to replace because it's the first question you're gonna get asked. So that's where the thinking on having the, a small bond to support them came from. I understand that there's different opinions.
Right.
I, I guess what I'm just trying to say in summary is spending a big number with no plan is a much bigger problem. Having one year while we wait for some type of a mediated solution, to me, doesn't keep me awake at night. Unless this mediated solution is, is not ever going to happen. And we are in year four and I think we have good reason to be concerned about that because we haven't seen any movement yet that that we're moving towards that or really not moving towards that. So that's all I wanted just far away there.
I think that might.
There hasn't been an override in Essex for the school operational budget, twenty years.
Right. Without any.
Is there an industry-wide accepted reserve percentages relative to the overall school budget that underwriters like to see, for instance?
Not exactly. No, it's a short answer. We took our number of 10% base off of collaboration work with the two towns and hearing from Manchester, that was their goal. They were trying to make a AAA standing. I know there's been some changes on some of the finance committee's positions on that and that's kind of for them to figure out. We also did have in our S and P report that they considered the levels to be low, but they also acknowledged that compared to other districts in Massachusetts, you know, they're not typically there. They compare us to a lot of other states, which is kind of what the borrowing market is like. And in other states, it's more common for, you know, school districts that are larger to have a reserve balance. So 10% has been our bogey of what we're trying to do. But even that's up for debate. The cap on the E and D portion is 5%. And that's the cap. So it'd have to be from other clubs.
So we still have two communities as a backstop as well, though.
That's right.
So that's what, like our funding when the school district borrows, it's not just even our rating, it's also the rating of our.
Correct.
This is current of the.
That's correct.
Those communities actually also include the school district when they set their percent.
That's right.
Arguably, that's where the argument that you'll start to hear.
There's a lot of money preserved.
I think there's some talk of whether they will ultimately carve out the district, which would take away, you know, hopefully that doesn't happen simultaneously with us reducing our reserves. So we should think about it collectively. But I, I have a question that relates to the budget, which is that no matter what we do this year, we're in an override position again next year, right?
That's right. So can I comment on that? I don't know that we definitely are. So.
Because that to me impacts how I.
I know. So one thing I've been really trying to run past my mind is we it kind of been in this.
Correction or an override? Does the school?
Well, I mean a correction, but I think is there any question that Essex wouldn't need to take it to an override?
So that is the question. And that's part of what I keep coming back to and, and, you know, I know we're nearing the end of our time. So I can it, just a thought question for as we go forward, which is I keep hearing, and we're all thinking it, you know, this doesn't solve the problem, right? And I'm hearing it also from townspeople and, you know, community members, leaders who are hearing this doesn't solve the problem. But what is the problem? The problem right now is that apportionment is impacting Essex in a way that we're not prepared for. That is the problem currently. So.
The school budget growth is, is higher than two and a half percent.
Well, I, I don't even, if, if apportionment weren't spiking in Essex right now, then this, the, the, the way it had been with the three and a half rolling down might not be as big a deal. It wasn't in past years until the apportionment shifted to Essex. So if that's the case, part of the question to me is who's going to solve that problem right now? What, what we're trying to ask our town partner is what are you doing to solve the problem? And the only answer I'm getting so far is less school district. And if that's the answer, that's the answer, but that's not the feedback that we're then getting from the bulk of the community. So I'm not sure that we can solve that problem. So the question is, we can't.
Can I solve that?
So, so the question is, are we willing? Right, right.
If you took a one-time 10% reduction of the total size of the district.
Right.
Shave it off. You still have the same problem next year.
We never out, we never get out of the structural issue of the growth.
Without an override.
Without overrides. And so to me, the only, the only path that I see that gets us to stability is one that gives us a very clear structured way of getting our two towns on the same page. And to me, that's, that's a mediated budget process. With or without use of reserves, that's up for debate, you know, whether or not we wanna go for another override ask or save it for next year or save it for the fields is one thing, but, but that's the big question to me is we're here trying to, trying to solve a problem that's not ours to solve.
So I think, I gotta go, but I'll just do my last comment.
I agree.
So I think the reserve, I think it has to be part of the budget management problem.
Agreed.
Because it has to manage between the three entities. How do we make sure the three, there's no extras on the side and that everybody feel comfortable who are spending? I, you know, I'm talking to town peoples from both towns, town officials from both towns. Everybody's, including us, we are holding on reserves so tight is because we don't trust each other. How are we gonna get the money back? How are we gonna get the money from each other? That's the reality. So I do think that, that is not just part of the.
I disagree with that.
But it's not just part of our prob, part of our problem is what you said, you know, the, everything you just said. But I think another big part of it is also the, you know, the, the culture and the divide that's been been, been happening for the past many years for whatever reason. And I do think that it's not just the apportionment that's gonna solve the issue. It's not just about opening the regional agreement. And it is, I think having a structured budget process is gonna help.
Yeah.
But it's also, you know, the relationship, the, the communication. There's a whole bunch of other things that we need to kind of build. And we need to start that very early on. And I actually do agree with Erica that personally at least, the way that I see it, even if we push forward the entire same budget for the second vote to Essex. And even if we, it doesn't matter what scenario, I do feel like the fundamental issues that we have is not going away unless we actually address it. Whether through this, the structural budget process is only gonna help. But I do see, I do feel like it's the, it's that relationship that trust and ability again.
And that's gotta be some of our summer work too, is to prioritize how are we doing that and how are we, how do we plan to do that moving forward as well?
Because we don't meet till August and then the budget is gonna happen really soon.
You don't have a budget till August at this rate. You're not, you know, you're not. So.
I'm, my concern is that without commitment and that you said that at the meeting last night, the Essex FinCon voted straw poll or whatever to support what we referred to as the compromise budget at our public hearing, but did not commit to necessarily a mediated budget or whatever the other.
I think, yeah, Jake, correct me if you heard it differently. I think that what I heard was mixed review on the sentiment about the mediated budget, which seemed to shift toward the end of the meeting, toward more support for that. But I don't think the FinCon can commit to the support on the turf fields. That's a, that's a.
So I guess my concern is that that's actually not a compromise. That is, as.
Well, unless and until we get that.
Take, take, right? Is that really, that's just us saying, okay, fine, we'll pull the money out of the reserves as we have every other year. Unless there's.
Right.
A give and take. So.
Which means that Monday night's Board of Selectmen meeting, we need to have that information as much as they're able to give and ask, ask of them to have that conversation and note so that Tuesday we can know what we're dealing with, if, if we actually have that commitment or not, to be able to make our decision.
Will they make this decision on Monday? Is that what they're gonna be talking about?
I don't know that they are, but I will send a very pleasant email requesting that they consider having that conversation. They know that we're having this. I'm sure there are probably some of them on the line right now.
So would Essex, next time when voting the school budget, be voting the field 400K together on the same vote?
Not necessarily. That came up. So the original plan had been to bring it to fall town meeting because that's when we do the bulk of our free cash. But there was an email that was sent from a community member that asked that they consider including that as part of the special town meeting for this in order to give us the assurance that that was a dumb thing. That's, that there's pluses and minuses with that because pushing it later means that we would know the exact amount. You know, you could combat that by saying not to exceed. You know, you, you could combat that by saying not to exceed, you know, however you wanted to do that, but that's up to them.
So question. So since there are, there are commitment issues that we would like to understand and then um feel good about before we make the decisions about what. Scenario we, you know, vote, vote on. Uh, and I don't know if we have time, it's probably delayed, but um is it possible to get. The people all in the one room and we talk about. At least the thing counts in school coming.
I, I think we need to do that moving forward, but they're doing that. I mean, they did it last night. They met, they added a meeting last night to go through all of this. Have you received any communication from the town of Essex that they'd like to get together and discuss this proposal in any way? Okay, so my conversation with um Chairman Butrick last week yielded that he was going to call a. Finance committee meeting. They posted it and had it last night and Board of Selectmen has one on Monday, so.
But they didn't, I, I called in yesterday, so they didn't talk about any concrete commitment yet about. What they wanna commit, right?
We don't have an official alternative proposal. Can put a proposed compromise on the table. We never endorse that as a school.
Provided any feedback other than certain level of compromise.
We're just talking as if that is the proposal that's on the table for everybody to discuss.
We're talking about that right now, number one, because it's, it's what we came to discuss and also because that's what the finance committee discussed. Last night. But you're right, it's, it's not the only proposal we can discuss, but we are also on a timeframe here too, so we. And I need to go.
Prior to our meeting on Tuesday to um. An hour beforehand to see if we can get to a place where there's.
That's, that's an idea.
We need to invite both towns.
It has to be both towns. It can't be.
On the compromise and I, I hear your point Jake, but you, you put another proposal in front of us. The biggest missing piece for me is why. We should put off the original budget, which. The overwhelming majority of communications have supported. Why we should put that off and the only reason to put off sending that back to the town is if we can. Ensure that we have a better path toward a more productive discussion next year. And I don't know how to assure that. That's where the.
I will say, I think that there is the other reason to put it off. Is because there was a version six and it did get turned down, and I think that there needs to be some level of.
Well, there was two votes in Essex, one at town meeting. So every time I, I have our people, will Essex send a message at ballot box? They say to me. I'm not clear what message Essex sent. They sent one message at town meeting, they sent another message at the ballot box, so. You know, it's not that I'm not listening to the public, I am, but the public didn't give a very clear statement.
Only thing I'm trying to achieve with the compromise budget. Is for the committee to have a greater reliability on what the outcome will be. Using our reserves is not a long-term solution. It's. Entire concept behind the budget we were proposing and the ask we were making. However, anything that relies on Essex agreeing on a number of their own reserves. For an override pushes you out forty-five days at a minimum, according to Brendan. And there's no guaranteed outcome of what that will be. If we're already into July for a town meeting and a vote, now you're into August for a joint town meeting. You have effectively promoted the cut budget because there's no way we're coming back from that in any. Organized fashion, trying to do late August hiring after we've occupied the headlines for the next three months. Without budget problems. So putting in your own reserves sends them a budget that meets their need based on the election. And hopefully wraps us up by the end of June. That's, that would be what I would advocate for. And then you get the concessions that we need to find the long-term solution. I get the skin in the game argument. I'm hearing it from people that I've talked with on the Manchester side. It, I think it's chance, that you're taking more of a chance, but if we want, if that's the will of the group, we'll go forward with, with that.
So maybe a thought, a thought exercise for us between now and Tuesday.
Bad idea, because like we talked about, the override just gets larger. So yes, it, so that is a very good short-term solution. Right? Very good short-term solution for us just to use our reserves. What that, what the waterfall effect of that is, is kicking out an even larger override for next year. Kicking out potential cuts that if, like are really bad cuts on top of the cuts we've already posed this year, even worse cuts next year. And a very, very good chance of the same thing occurring and having to work through it then when the. Cuts are impacting even more teachers most of us.
I think we have to acknowledge that, that. At some point between passing this budget and the next budget, we are either. Going to be at level services or reducing the district. I, I mean, i- it's not just necessarily that we have to be, I mean, that's the outcome we're looking for. We're looking for an outcome of. Are we gonna move forward with a plan that, that both towns are on board with? To keep the scope of services that we offer and not get involved in this, in this rabbit. At least for a couple few years so that we can give some space for stability.
Like we already cut foreign language last year.
I, 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 I know, you're absolutely right. But that's the two, the two options here. Like, are we trying to keep the district we have or are we acknowledging Essex's? Apportionment issue by reducing the district.
I, I know what Avi thinks about this, so we won't answer that. With bold judgment, I, I said this the other night and it didn't, I don't think I articulated it well, but. I don't like using the reserves for operating. It just doesn't make sense. I do like using them for capital expenses. I think that's what they're there for. I know the fields would be expensive and draw down on the reserves significantly, but we have to have a large reserve balance. If we used the reserves to fund the fields and. Alleviated that portion of the funding from what we're asking Essex to do. So that's like four hundred something, right, that we're looking for from Essex? Couldn't they use that money? They're gonna be coming up with it somewhere presumably. And put that toward the operating budget, so they're back to funding the operating budget and we're funding capital.
It's not four hundred thousand dollars, it's. Like it, it's just the, what, the payment on the financing.
They're saying, if they're gonna use free cash, why can't they use a free cash?
Their capital reserves to fund an operating is, issue versus a one-time fee for a field.
Now, there may be an argument to be made that this is a, a one-time issue. This is a current spike in apportionment. We now see the cycle that takes place. And we can move forward as a town with a long-term plan for, for having a.
Structurally, that makes a lot more sense to me. We're doing what we're meant to do as a district. Well, there is a portion of it that is. What, what's up to us is, you know, right now we're considering using some of our reserves for operating. I don't like it. I, I think it creates this cycle. But, but I don't mind doing it per capital and I would consider it, even though Avi thinks it's a very bad idea to use that much money, but I would still consider it. And keep, keep the, you know, assets configured.
I think we have a better chance of getting the override if the, if the town also knows there is not another request for the fields coming immediately afterwards.
So let's play it out. I mean, that's absolutely, absolutely the direction we can go. Forget the financing, it's outlay, one point two million fields are done. Where are we with our operating budget? We're gonna need an override from the town of Essex. It just failed. It will go back. At the same size and we have no, and we have our reserve backstop to stop bleeding later on.
I'm asking, if, if we're gonna have this communication with the town of Essex to say, one, where do you stand with the mediation? Two, where do you stand? Uh, w- with the various proposals that are in campus compromise, could it be a question? And, and maybe this is just a non-starter, but could it be a question of, there's also some appeal to. You know, thinking about whether you might be able to free up funds. If we took back ownership of the, not ownership, the funding of the fields. Would that in any way free a catch? I mean, I do think they'll probably use free cash for the fields. I don't think they're inclined to, at least. Most recently, I didn't think they're inclined to go for some financing, so that. It seems to put some money at play. They might have a reason against it, but they, I mean, it's options, right? We don't have many.
The question has been asked, but it may not, we can ask it again. There's no reason we can't.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So you're thinking they would then, so the fields would come from our reserves and the ask is they put in, what is it, two eighty-five? Of their reserves to balance their budget for this year and then next year another.
And, and then, then we're, we're at the same, that would also come along with the idea of. We still need to obviously find a path forward. We still need some mediation, but budget process, but is it just a different option, like? You know, we're trying to.
I think it's just robbing Peter to pay Paul.
We are either way.
The districts. Available money to manage the problem. That's all. It's robbing Peter to pay Paul and I, and I, it's a great concept. I think the trade-off is you've now reduced the district's ability to manage its own problem by half. Presumes we get a correction that's sustainable over time.
I think in some ways, as our, as our reserves decline, we are actually gonna be in a better place to negotiate with the towns. And I know that sounds counterintuitive, but there is like this whole contingent even within Manchester who feels like as long as we're gonna contain. Maintain what they feel like are inflated or double counted reserve balances. That the school is somehow not, not playing his part, holding taxpayer money. So there's something that I see. From a PR perspective as actually helping as our reserves are smaller, so. I, I know it doesn't help the rate.
Can I share two, two thoughts on that? Um, cause the conversation has continued to come up about that. Um, yes, it didn't in last night's meeting about the. Even though I know it went through in some um email communications from community members to the FinCon, they did not entertain the, the discussion about using. Free cash to offset any of that. Um, I, I will say one, one counterpoint that has come up repeatedly. Um, at FinCon is that they're already using uh existing levy capacity to. So now that they're, now they're at levy capacity and so our taxes are already going up. Um, based on that, I think that's something we really need to keep in mind also with the timing of this stuff. Real estate bills are going to come out July first. Any vote that takes place after July first is going to come with people who. Have just seen an increase in their taxes, so we have to remember that as we move.
People in Essex that their taxes decreased last year, sorry.
They're, they're definitely going up again this year. The mill rates going up. And then the other thing that, that we should know though. The other thing though is that the field conversation, again, it got, it got a little, it was a little confused to begin with. It got a little mucked up in the spring. Um, I actually think there's more support for that than for using uh free cash for an override. Scenario in Essex. I think that there are enough people who understand these things and recognize the value of that as a, as a good business practice. And B, value to the taxpayer in the long run, that, that, that might actually have a shot.
It's not value to a school system, but there's value to.
I'm, I'm with you there. I know. I share the frustration, but I, I guess my point is of those two things, Jake, tell me if you think differently. I think we have a better shot with our um. With our Essex um boards at getting support for the field funding, knowing that that's a capital expense. Then getting um free cash used to offset the override ask.
Yes, cause it's a, Erica, exactly. You, you said it very well, right? It's an operation versus a capital use of those. These are fun basically, right? And that's how they think about it as well. Whether or not we're going to the town to ask for an override or not.
Well, I just have a basic question about this too, so. We spent twenty minutes talking about what town leaders of Essex uh may or may not. Want or support, but. You know, it's my opinion that uh both boards in Manchester and Essex have a decent amount of influence over and, you know. Ability to comment during town meeting. At a ballot vote, I don't really see. Uh, you know, what, what, what it really matters if. If uh both boards in Essex end up supporting whatever decision we make, I'm not sure how much of effect that has at the ballot.
I think it does in pu, in public influence. The people who turn out to vote pay attention to, at least in Essex, the people who turn out to vote pay attention to what our town leaders say.
I guess.
But are they paying attention to what we're saying here, you know, what we're talking about? I mean, the things that we say that lead up to the, this. Next vote.
There's a good amount of people that go to town.
Same thing, Chris. Ultimately, it's the voters that decide what passes. And not the opinions of some board members.
That's a tricky one, having just witnessed what some, some uh key influential people in our town who actually do have good reach. The effort that they put into getting out the vote and um, you know. Anyone who's interested, I can talk about, you know, what I've learned since about, you know, the results of the vote in Essex and. Who did vote versus who didn't and why and, and, you know, a lot of that's still unfolding, but um. I guess, I, I'm just, I'm not inclined to, to bank on anything coming out of Essex right now.
Do we need another, do we need more time on Monday or are we ready to go into Tuesday? But what, what are the big questions on the table that we are not prepared for on Tuesday?
I think, I understand how whether Essex is willing to commit to some type of structured process moving forward as. As a release of the budget.
And we won't have that until Monday night at least.
Unless, like, what, what do you mean by commitment? Do you mean like I'm writing a check?
I mean, I think all we think in our position is try to get to a place where. The two communities are more aligned in how they view funding the district. I think that's all we can do. And so my vote is going to turn on, not this year, but moving forward. How do we get to that place? And so, you know, I, I share your hesitation. That, that we get to a much better place, and I know you have more institutional knowledge. But at the same time, what are we supposed to say? It's just impossible. Throw our hands up in the air, walk away. I don't, I don't know what about started in this.
I, I do not believe it's impossible. I believe for this vote, the timeframe is too short. Um, so I don't not believe that that's a. I, I don't believe the insight's valuable when you have such a short timeframe. And which is why I don't think these conversations should be had as part of the budget process either, but I think, you know. They should be had outside of this and, and. There's a better way to approach all of this, in my opinion. Um, but I don't think we're gonna get any. When it's been a four-year long process and now we're hoping in a weekend that that changes.
So what are you suggesting?
I'm not suggesting anything yet.
I'm suggesting that we consider and come Tuesday, ready to, ready to decide whether or not we're willing to put it back to the voters of Essex. Or whether we wanna take our destiny for this year right now into our own hands and use a structured. Um, you know, it, it could have been discussed. We spent so much time discussing other things. It could have been discussed. Through the course of collaboration this year, instead of pulling it out all at once, could we do a structured over a few years? I mean, we could. You know, do a structured removal of reserves from operating with partial this year and then the rest next year and give us, you know. The time to do that now that we have sufficient um community interest, but that to me is the question that I'm gonna be wrestling with between now and Tuesday is. What, what in, what information can we get from Essex and will, I know we'll, as Essex reps, do our best to um. To find out what we can, certainly um in open meeting Monday night at the Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, on, on where the Essex leadership is at least. Um, and whether or not we wanna move forward with a reduced or otherwise. Ask again of the voters in Essex or whether we wanna take this into our own hands for right now.
I mean, you asked what, what I'm suggesting, I guess, so I've been doing a lot of. Research on this myself on, on both ways. Um. I can maybe share some of that research and try and form an opinion on this, but in, in my opinion, there are no good choices here. None of these choices are good. So I'm looking to try to critically think about the. Least. The, I don't know, I guess the best of the worst options.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably true for all of us. I don't think anybody thinks any of these choices are good ones. But I guess I was wondering more in terms of, you said that's not gonna happen when I said, you know, it'd be great to have some perspective from the leadership. And I'm saying, so if you don't believe that's gonna happen, how do we, how do we approach? It, cause in my mind, even if we go back, whether it's with the original budget or some, you know, compromise like Jay, Jake suggested, if we go back to the ballot box. We vote on this again in Essex. Uh, we can't possibly be asking for an override again next year. Uh, i- i- and if we think we're going to be, it would not be successful.
We, we, the school committee is not requesting anyone in Essex to go to the ballot box. We're, we're just trying to, as, as a member of the school committee, I would like to think that my first responsibility is to the students of the school district. My second responsibility would be to the taxpayers of both of our member towns. And then my third responsibility, I think, would be to all the employees in the district. And that's kinda how I've always personally ranked. in the district. And that's kind of how I've always personally ranked in my head. Um, and I think that we need to seriously consider the short and long-term, with any decision, the short and long-term impacts on our students.
Sure. But, and, and that's exactly what I'm saying is to consider the short, long-term impact on our students. We have to consider how this budget process plays out because if the likelihood, and I know we don't ask for the budget override in Essex, I'm, I, I understand how the process works, but if we know that the logic, the likely outcome next year, given the deficit we're anticipating is that we may again end up in an override position, that has a very dramatic impact on our students next year. In fact, bigger than it has this year. And so that's what I'm trying to wrestle with in my head. It's not that we control that outcome. That, that's up to the town of Essex or the town of Manchester. But if we think something's likely, what does that scenario look like at our school district?
So do you mean, um, like for instance, if, uh, our, so if our, um, budget, our original budget that we proposed passed this year, you're saying that could have had like another correction next year? So I'm, I'm confused.
I'm just gonna say it directly.
Yeah.
And we can feel the way they do about it. The problem is structural.
Yeah.
Right. We grow a 3.5.
Yeah.
The budget for 2.5. For us to meet that, it's 1%. It, it's not that we're expanding the budget. We're doing everything we can to cut the budget to get to a point where they can afford. So
Well, this is my, this is my confusion too.
Problem is, we can't solve it. There's nothing we can do. We can make.
We all agree with that.
But we're still trying to solve it.
I think we're trying, what I'm trying to do is predict where we're going to be as a district and have that guide the choices. We're gonna have to vote on Tuesday.
I guess I'll say it differently. We are, we are actively problem solving, scenario debating amongst ourselves, having, looking at multiple scenarios, coming up with discussions over the years of, of bridging the gap and using reserves up and then a, the drawdown in the amount. We have presented multiple ways that we can manage this. We can't do it alone. We need an active partner and the partner we need needs to come forward and start engaging with us. That's why I'm, I'm asking for mediation. The engagement can't just be cut to get us to where we need to go. Redo the district, get rid of administration, get rid of small, I mean, that's the feedback that we've gotten on how to manage the problem. We, we can do that for a while, but we, we're running out of options on how to continue to cut back what the total number is.
So Pam, I don't, I think we all agree with you. We hear with you. We hear you. We agree with you and but that doesn't, we can't solve that issue by Tuesday.
Absolutely.
I think what we're trying to understand is how can we best enable that process to happen next year and beyond?
Uh, fair enough. I have a thought on that. So I've been thinking a lot because I'm getting input, input from all the different people about this, um, you know, two-town town meeting, right? We don't want that right now. Nobody wants that right now. Culturally, it's going to be disastrous. Hamilton Wenham is still talking about a, a meeting that happened many, many moons ago. Um, culturally, that would be bad. However, if we get through this, we find some way to cobble this together. And in the next year, we don't actually come to some resolution, I will be in support of, 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 we get there. If that's what we have to do, because we can't keep destroying our district. So that to me is one possible outcome that, look, this, whatever it is, whether it's a, a, a reduced override ask or using reserves to, to do this now, then in the next year, yeah, we've got that time, whatever it is. Cause again, none of these options solve the problem. But then in that time, if that doesn't happen, we let that happen. That to me is an endpoint. I don't love it.
Just repriming, all I was saying is we can't do much more without uh, our partners at the table.
Yeah.
And if we're in a period where collaboration is a dirty word, we need another mechanism for doing it, something like remediation.
Okay.
All right. We're about to lose quorum. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm in.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor.
All right.
Thank you all. Middle of the day.
And we are not meeting Monday, just to be clear. I didn't hear any.